February 6, 2018, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now and by standing and stating their name and address.
Elizabeth Balvin.
Is there anyone else wishing to record at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll ask Counselor Fleming to lead us in the salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
I've been demoted. Present.
Counselor Squelia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deetah.
Here.
Warrant for the special meeting.
(laughing)
Counselor Boesman.
Counselor Boesman's present.
(laughing)
You want me to leave?
No.
I was demoted and you're not even on the council. (laughing) All right, warrant for a special meeting of the city council. A special meeting of the city council will be held on Tuesday, February 6, 2018, immediately following the Appointments Committee meeting, which is scheduled to begin immediately following the regular city council meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM, Memorial Middle School, 615 Rollstone Street, Fitchburg, Mass. 01420. The following matters are on the agenda this evening. First, Appointments Committee oral report regarding the appointment of an assistant city clerk. The committee meeting will be held on February 6, immediately following the city council meeting. Second is to name a replacement to fill the vacancy in the office of city council, the Fitchburg City Council at large due to the resignation of newly-elected state senator Dean Tran. The following will be the order of business for those matters. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call attendance, read the warrant of the special meeting, hear oral report from the Appointments Committee, vote on the, vote to accept the rules of the process for naming of the counselor. The clerk will then read the name of the candidates, then conduct a lottery of presentations by candidates, presentations by the candidates of not more than three minutes, followed by roll call vote to elect the counselor at large, which the counselor will then be sworn in by our clerk. That said, first order of business is an oral report of the Appointments Committee, which was just conducted, for a three-year term to begin on March 19, 2018, of Ms. Amanda Alfred, who is with us this evening. The committee met earlier this evening, and it was a unanimous vote of five to zero to recommend her appointment.
Will the committee on appointments report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the committee, the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Congratulations. (applause)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Congratulations.
(inaudible)
He's not a counselor anymore, if you heard from the top of the meeting.
(inaudible)
Congratulations again, look forward to working with you in the three years to come. Next on the agenda, we have vote to accept the rules for the process of naming of counselor-at-large counselors and candidates. All received these rules in advance. I'd be asking for your vote to accept.
Motion to accept the rules that were in place.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the rules as outlined in advance of the meeting. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Madam Clerk, could you please read the name of the candidates and then conduct the lottery?
Candidates are Nicholas Carbone, E. Thomas Donnelly, Harold Mateo, Donna Pollak, Robert Poole, Jorge Rodriguez, Jacob Roth, and Alexander Vera.
Now conduct a lottery at this time.
Candidates could come forward, please, and draw a number. Let me know what the number is.
All right. Number eight.
Number four.
Number two.
Please.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Number seven.
Apologies.
Mateo, what number were you?
Six.
Oh, thank you. Three.
Five.
So each candidate will have three minutes at the 2:45 second mark for your convenience. I will be, I'll be tapping just once slightly on the gavel to let you know that your time is about to elapse at the 3-minute mark. I will cut each candidate off.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Tom Donnelly. I've been living, going to school, and working in Fitchburg for most of my life. When I graduated from Fitchburg State, I purchased my first home and became a taxpayer in Fitchburg for the first time. I worked for the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority in City Hall, where I learned the rules and how local government works. As an adult, I grew to love our city for all the opportunities it has given families to live, work, and play here. I started as a neighborhood activist in the college neighborhood early on, and I helped organize the first neighborhood cleanup here in 1979. Later, I served in the zoning board of appeals in the Fitchburg City Council. Currently, I serve in the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority Board. Fitchburg's a very diverse community, both economically and ethnically. I have come to know every neighborhood in the city and many great people who volunteer in their neighborhoods. My interests have given me opportunities to deal with diversity on a regular basis. Fitchburg is so diverse that our school system has students who speak 36 languages. I began volunteering in the city because I was interested in Fitchburg and wanted to give back to the community that's been so good to me and my family. This interest grew into a lifelong passion, and I continue to enjoy making Fitchburg the best it can be for my family and all the families that live here and call the city home. I would like to point out that I did run for camp, did campaign for counselor-at-large during November's general election, which exemplifies my commitment to Fitchburg. I know I have a lot to offer the city and this council. I would be honored to receive your vote so I can serve in this capacity with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Roth.
Thank you for allowing me to also speak up here. So obviously, my name is Jacob Roth, but you guys knew that. I'm a recent graduate of Fitchburg State University, and I'm, I'm going to be living in Fitchburg for a while, so I figured what is the best way, you know, to get involved in the community? Obviously, one for, one for the special election that is being happened now. As like I said, I am a recent graduate of Fitchburg State University, so one of my areas, I, one of my strengths would be knowing the college campus, knowing the college, knowing the, the college area right around and being so close that I still have ties to it, you know? I have strung ties with the campus, with the university, and I, having known the local area, I believe that would be a matter of strength. Not only that, obviously, I have not run for any sort of office before, especially, you know, oh, in the Fitchburg area for Fitchburg politics, but I believe that's not a weakness, I believe that's a strength. Coming into this, I'm unbiased as I can be. So while everyone else, you know, I've, I've been in Fitchburg for the last five years, but my opinions are my own, I have no ties, I guess, to say, towards anyone in this community that would cause me to have some sort of opinion that could be warranted as bias. Like I said, I'm honored and thank you all for allowing me to speak for this opportunity, and no matter what happens, I think all of the candidates can agree that this is a shining example of how a community should be. The fact that we're all coming here to make sure that this community can be the best it can be, and I'm very excited to be have, I'm very excited to have the opportunity to be part of that. So, thank you all. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have Attorney Pollak.
Good evening.
Good evening. City councilors and citizens of Fitchburg, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. When I think about why I've put my name in for a candidate for city council, it's genuinely because I just love the city of Fitchburg. I do. I've grown up here, I've lived here my whole life, except for when I went to school and I went to North Adams State College. I've raised my children here, my children have graduated here, my daughter's graduate from Fitchburg High School, she's at UMass, I'm a graduate of Fitchburg High School. I love Fitchburg, and I love the Fitchburg that I know it is, not the Fitchburg that everybody sees outside of Fitchburg. I think, when I think of Fitchburg, I look at what we see in the newspapers, what we see in the Boston newspapers, and what they portray of us, and sometimes, I gotta tell you, I genuinely get angry because I see Cogswell Park, I see Coolidge Park, I see the fabulous wildlife sanctuary that we have, I see the Long Joe Road Race, I see the Beer Fest we have, I see fabulous people that come to all these fabulous events, and I believe in Fitchburg. And when I see us in the newspaper, when I see us in Boston, I see only the negative things they portray. Best example of it, how fabulous is Long Joe? We have Olympic qualifying event here, the only time they cover us is when two people get into a fight. Why aren't they covering us every single year when these fabulous races are here, when people come from all over the state to see this fabulous event, when we have races from all over the world coming? That's the Fitchburg I see. As you know, I, from my resume, I have a law office in Fitchburg, which I intentionally have in Fitchburg. It originally was in Worcester, we moved it to Fitchburg. I believe in Fitchburg, I wanted it to be here, this is a place we can grow, this is where I believe we should be. I believe in the downtown, I believe in the economic development of it, and I believe that if we can get the rest of the state to see what a fabulous community we are, that we can grow. I believe that the city council is working together for economic development, for education. My family is a long line of educators, my husband's taught special ed, his sisters teach special ed. My husband's a firefighter, so I believe in community service, the public sector. I was a DA, I love the police department, I've worked with them, I've worked in law enforcement, I prosecuted gangs in Worcester County, and when I see Fitchburg as a DA, I don't see a city that's worse than any other city in the state. I see a city that's got potential. I see a police department that cares, I see a fire department that cares. I see all this in the city of Fitchburg, and I believe in it, I want to help promote that. You know, when I hear other towns talk about the bad things that they see in the city of Fitchburg, I say, you're just not seeing it in the other cities. When the city of Fitchburg unfortunately reports a gun in the schools, I say, well, you know what, I saw it a whole lot when I was a DA, and I saw it in all little towns that surround Fitchburg, and I saw it all over Worcester County. But you know what? The city of Fitchburg told the parents about it, the city of Fitchburg informed their citizens about it, the city of Fitchburg didn't hide behind it. That doesn't make us a worse city.
Attorney Pollak, your, your time has elapsed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even hear your thing. So anyways, I believe in the city of Fitchburg, love it, just want to be able to help serve it, and thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Poole. Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Robert Poole, and I reside at 167 Blossom Street. I am a renter, as a matter of fact, I, I rent from Tom Donnelly. Unlike the rest of the candidates here, I am not from the city of Fitchburg. I've been here about four and a half years and have embraced Fitchburg as my home. I believe that the city of Fitchburg could flourish, as it once had, with, with the assistance of a proactive Economic Development Committee, Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority, and Planning Board, those three entities working proactively together. I see from the common person's viewpoint as, because I'm on, I'm on Social Security, and I know Fitchburg basically has a lower income and doesn't have, you know, the people here do not have a lot of, a lot of discretionary disposable income, okay? Now, being on Social Security, I'm able to see things at the, at what I, what I, the term I used with Mr. Kuschmerich and Mr. Zarella is, I see things from street level. I see people's point of view, and I'm looking to be a voice for these people, for, for those of us who are on limited income and low income. I see a lot, I see a lot of potential in Fitchburg. I realize too that I am but one person. I also realize that as far as issues facing the city of Fitchburg, there are no easy answers. And I've said, and Mr. Zarella, Mr. Kuschmerich, I did, I used, I told, I said those, that same thing to both of you. There are no easy answers to the issues facing this city, whether it's economic, whether it's the schools, whatever it might be, there are no easy answers. What I'm asking for is the opportunity to speak for the, for the residents of the city of Fitchburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Attorney Carbone. Could a counselor please? Thank you.
Hey, yes, it's been a while. So, good evening, counsel. You all have my resume, you have my memo, so I'm not gonna talk about that stuff, I'm not gonna speak about what you have in front of you, put their rules. What I wanna do is share, share what I, kind of a story I was thinking about earlier this week, and really, it's about my first five years of practice as an attorney, but I practiced primarily in North County, Fitchburg, Gardner, Orange, Danta, Worcester, and throughout that practice, I've realized that every time I come into Fitchburg or the, or the courts around there, I, I come into court and I realize that I don't know anyone there. I grew up in Fitchburg, I went to Fitchburg Public Schools, I was on the city council. I feel like a lot of people know my siblings, hopefully that's a good thing, they know me, hopefully that's a good thing, and it's surprising how many people I see that I have no idea who they are, specifically in Fitchburg, my office on Main Street. So those are the people I've also talked to, the injured, the disabled, the elderly, those in the unfortunate situation of going through the criminal justice system, and those are the people I talk with on a daily basis, and what they need, they need is an advocate, and I, I wanna be that person, and I wanna bring that to the city council. Something that may have been neglected in the past, and that's something I would focus on, I work with our state leadership to do so, and that's, that's what I'd hope to do in these next few years. So, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Mateo.
Good evening. How are you today? My name is Harold Mateo. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you. I had a chance to come before you in the past to help talk about the vacancy rules that we have here in our city regarding abandoned property, and as you all are aware, because you voted on it, that successfully has gone through, and so it seems to be a whole lot easier in the city of Fitchburg to be able to buy an abandoned property that is either a single-family or two-family home and renovate it. I, I am from the city of Fitchburg, I grew up here, public schools, South Street Elementary, BF Brown, Fitchburg High, and the reason I'm here before you is, is 'cause I wanna help improve the state of the city. And I think all of you as councilors and the candidates that are here and concerned citizens deserve to be involved with the city they love, and I love Fitchburg. And so, as, as a counselor, I would propose giving you a point of view which is from a businessperson, somebody that's involved in the community with boots on the ground, that's on a daily basis dealing with the building department, the clerk's office, the assessor's office, and more on a, I would say, outside consultancy view, figure out deficiencies that we have in our system and improve them. I guess they would be free, we wouldn't be paying an outside consultant, right? So, at the end of the day, you had a vote on the renovation of the City Hall building, and I, I'm not quite sure that anybody has mentioned that tonight, but I was here that day, and I actually voiced my approval for that, because I too, I am investing money in downtown Fitchburg, and I feel the city should be investing in themselves, and I certainly will continue to do that whether I am a counselor or not. I will always love the city of Fitchburg. I think this is a wonderful opportunity that has presented itself, that has allowed us to come before you. We certainly wish Dean Tran and his state senate seat the best of luck. I think Fitchburg is going in the right direction, but we have to make sure we are inclusive of all people. We certainly need diversity on this city council, and I think we need to be able to open up our ears and listen to the platforms that are trying to communicate with us, whether, whether it is from the outside or the inside, whether it's social media or directly. So, I really thank you for the opportunity to be here. I thank the mayor always for his support and Marcus. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rodriguez.
My name is Jorge Georgi Rodriguez. Since 1984, Fitchburg has been my city. My children were born here, they were all born in Bourbon Hospital. Happily married, 33 years with Ms. Daisy, we're property owners, registered voters, and taxpayers of the city. I have devoted over 30 years of my life to public service, since working with the elderly, when I started with Meals on Wheels, working with the homeless, feeding them, clothing them, helping them, serving as a liaison between city government, the private enterprise, and different agencies with the ever-growing Hispanic-American population, which is 20% in our city. I have worked hard for a stronger education. I have worked diligently for better security in our community. I won't stop working. I am devoted to work. Being a counselor is not only a job, you need passion, compassion, love, and being a counselor is a privilege to be serving the people and the constituents of our city. If given the opportunity, I'm going to be a strong ally for all good causes. I'm going to continue to work hard in the road to prosperity and progress, to bring this city and let the world know that Fitchburg is open for business. I ask you to cast your vote of confidence for diversity, for cultural, for ethnicity, for all the goodness in our city, for Georgi Rodriguez, for counselor-at-large. Thank you, and God bless you.
And our final candidate of the evening, Mr. Vera. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable councilors, members of the city council. My name's Alexander Vera, and I'm here tonight to offer myself for service to our wonderful city. I know that I'm not alone in this offer, which is a testament to our city and, you know, the great people that they want to step up and work hard to make Fitchburg, to move Fitchburg forward. I'm sure each of you has your own set of criteria and attributes that you're looking for, and as a concerned citizen and committed voter, I also have my own expectations for the filling of the seat. And here are a few reasons why I believe I offer what the Fitchburg City Council can use most going forward. First, I believe the seat should be filled by someone who ran for office in the last municipal election. As you all are aware, running for office demonstrates commitment, courage, personal investment in our community, and the ambition to strive for continuous improvement. Running in the last election was refreshing, I met a ton of outstanding individuals, and showed my strength of character in that campaign by always remaining positive, never attacking my opponent, and keeping my attention 100% focused on the goal, moving Fitchburg forward. Second, I believe it is important to have a diverse body of representatives that reflects the community it serves. I offer a new diverse aspect to the city council in many ways. As a millennial, I would bring a frame of reference of a new generation to our council. As someone who went to Fitchburg's public schools in the recent past, I have a unique and hands-on approach and perspective as it relates to our schools, its buildings, and education in general. As a Hispanic individual, I would be a bridge to a very large community in our city, while ensuring that their voices are heard and that they are welcome in our Fitchburg. This year, together, we can, we can bring the community a successful culture festival, Hispanic culture festival, one that would add to the list of registered voters and to the many helping hands who would like to see Fitchburg progress. And as an openly gay man, I would bring a voice to the city council that would be new, and in these days, a much-needed voice in a quickly-changing and evolving culture. Lastly, is vision. The person elected to this open seat should be a visionary. Not only is it, is it important to reflect the voices of the community, but it's important to have a positive vision of what Fitchburg could be. Like all of you council members here today, I wake up every day and see the endless possibilities of Fitchburg's future. As Albert Einstein once said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we use to create them." As a council, you just need that one diverse individual who represents so much culture and attract and open the doors to more, for more people to be involved in Fitchburg's growth. So with my demonstrated commitment, behavior, and ethics in the last election, the diversity that I would add to the city council in several areas, and my desire to serve the community I love, I ask for your support for the open council seat. Thank you.
Thank you. We've concluded the presentation by the candidates. I just want to take this quick opportunity to thank each of the eight individuals who put their name forward, demonstrating a clear passion and commitment to the city, and as so many mentioned, you know, it's, it's a testament to our community and the will of our community that people put themselves forward and, and volunteer and dedicate themselves to public service and to public life. So I want to thank each of you, and my challenge to you is that, you know, there'll be only one person who joins the city council later this evening. My challenge to the other seven is to stay involved, to stay committed, to volunteer through the community, and to put yourself in a situation to be on the ballot in the next election to match your commitment that you voiced to us this evening. So that said, we'll now move into roll call vote. Madam Clerk, councilors, if you would just voice the name of the candidate that they are voting for.
Correct. Counselor Fleming.
Tom Donnelly.
Counselor Green.
Georgi Rodriguez.
Counselor Caddy.
Tom Donnelly.
President Kuschmerich.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Counselor Squelia.
Harold Mateo.
Counselor Walsh.
Attorney Carbone.
Counselor Zarella.
Nicholas Carbone.
Counselor Boesman.
You're honored to sit on the council with Tom Donnelly.
Counselor Clark.
Tom Donnelly.
Counselor Deetah. Councillor Deena Tally.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Okay, we have two for Councillor Carbone, four for Councillor Donnelly, one, I'm sorry, Councillor Donnelly, Mr. Donnelly, one for Mr. Mateo, three for Mr. Rodriguez.
So we have, uh, so we have four for, uh, for, uh, Mr. Donnelly, three for Mr. Rodriguez, two for Mr., uh, for Attorney Carbone, and one for Mr. Mateo. Uh, we drop the lowest vote getter, uh, in this case, it is Mr. Mateo, uh, and we'll begin the next round. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Fleming.
Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Green.
Georgi Rodriguez.
Councillor Caddy.
Tom Donnelly.
President Kuschmerich.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Councillor Squailia.
Georgi Rodriguez.
Councillor Walsh.
Nick Carbone.
Councillor Zarella.
Nick Carbone.
Councillor Boishman.
Again, an honor, Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Clark.
Donnelly.
Councillor Deena Tally. Seven vote drop.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Carbone, uh, with two votes, uh, is dropped from the, uh, from the next round of voting. Uh, Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Rodriguez with four apiece will remain. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Fleming.
Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Green.
Georgi Rodriguez.
Councillor Caddy.
Tom Donnelly.
President Kuschmerich.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Councillor Squailia.
Georgi Rodriguez.
Councillor Walsh.
Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Zarella.
Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Boishman.
Tom Donnelly.
Councillor Clark.
Donnelly.
Councillor Deena Tally. Two, three, four, five, six, two, three, four. Councillor Donnelly is elected with six votes.
It was, uh, six to four, Councillor Tom Donnelly. Would we like, uh, Councillor Donnelly to stay in the well, and you swear him in at this moment? Wonderful. Madam Clerk will conduct the swearing-in.
Raise your hand and repeat after me to take it off. I solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as city councillor at large for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God.
Simply adjourned.
And simply adjourned.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Uh, speaking to the motion, uh, Mayor Deena Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, um...
So the meeting is not yet adjourned, uh, we still have one speaker. The meeting is not yet adjourned, I'd ask folks to carry their conversation out in the lobby. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I want to take this opportunity to make an announcement Pittsburgh citizens, due to the inclement weather being predicted for tomorrow, it's with regret that the 2018 Mayor State of the City Ceremony will be canceled tomorrow, February 7th. I will broadcast the State of the City address at 6:00 PM tomorrow, February 7th, on Pittsburgh Access Television. Residents can view the address by tuning in to Comcast Channel 99, Verizon Channel 37, or streaming the government channel at www.fatv.org, or streaming on the FATV Facebook page. I would also like to publicly thank those who would have participated in this year's State of the City Ceremony. Congresswoman Nikki Sangas, State Senator Dean Tran, State Representative Stephen Hay, Council President Michael Kuschmerich, city councilors, school committee members, Boy Scout Troop 41, Matthew Sadowski, city clerk, Ann Affarel, Pittsburgh Fire and Police Departments, Pittsburgh High School Marching Band Choir under the direction of Tabitha Greenlee's, Pittsburgh High School Principal Jeremy Roach, Pittsburgh High School student, Tamia Thomas, George S. Talcott Post 10 American Legion Band under the direction of Rick Kazangian, the Monty Tech Marine Corps Junior ROTC, the New Life Spanish Christian Church, Pastor Dennis Bradley, St. Anthony's Church, my pastor, Father Juan Ramirez, the United Mung of Massachusetts, Katrina Yang, and Kylena Vu. And my heartfelt thanks go out to my, my staff, Joan David, and certainly my chief of staff, A.J. Terigney, who put a great deal of time and effort, and it's really regrettable that we can't have this ceremony tomorrow, but we don't, we don't want to put anyone in danger, the weather's gonna be pretty bad tomorrow, so, uh, please tune into FATV, again, broadcast tomorrow at, uh, at 6:00 PM, and I think they'll be running it on, on a regular basis after that. Also, the Wall That Heals, there's gonna be a fundraiser at the Texas Roadhouse in, dare I say it, Lemonster, uh, February 15th, 3:30 to 9:30 PM, a 10% donation for dinner if you go in and put your money down. So these are available in city hall, they're also available online, I believe, if you want to get them that way, but this will be coming in June, and, uh, it's a great event. It was in Lemonster, but of course, it's gonna be better here in Pittsburgh, and, uh, so, we can use all the involvement and participation that we can, so, thank you.
I want to, uh, now recognize our, uh, our newly sworn-in councillor, Donnelly, uh, who had some, some brief remarks.
Couple of short words, councilors, thank you very much for your faith in me, I just want to say I'll do my best to work with you in the best interests of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed, we adjourn, thank you, councillors.